Yeah, that policy's changing, so we'll have that coming.
Right. So instead of checking all the boxes, let's just take the minimum until next month.
Well, do we have the policy in place now that essentially is a de facto minimum? Would you, would you say?
Not for the cell phone, that's what you're saying.
Wow.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Cogga Heights Board of Education meeting. It is September 3rd at 6:04 in Wether-Bonneray Media Center. Will the treasurer please call the roll?
Mr. Dobbins?
Here.
Mrs. Edder?
Here.
Ms. Prowse?
Here.
Mrs. Decker?
Here.
Mr. Souchak?
Here, five present, none absent. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. The board values and encourages public comment on education issues and anyone having an interest in the actions of the board may participate during that portion of the meeting. Copy of the board agenda is available for review on the website. And we do ask that you silence your cell phones, I'm probably the worst offender of that. And at this point, rise for the pledge.
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this point, we'll move on to Section 2A. I'll accept a motion to approve tonight's agenda, please.
Second.
Okay, was that Ms. Prowse?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so, and Mr. Dobbins was second. Any discussion? During none, treasurer, please call the roll.
Ms. Prowse?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye.
Mrs. Edder?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Souchak?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Section 3, comments from the public, we have no one in the audience, so Section 4, treasurer's business.
All right, so we just have one item tonight for approval. It is item 4A.
Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's business, please.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Dobbins?
Oh, second.
Second by Ms. Decker, is there any discussion? Hearing none, treasurer, please call the roll.
Uh, Mr. Dobbins?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mrs. Edder?
Aye.
Ms. Prowse?
Aye.
Mr. Souchak?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Uh, moving on to Section 6, treasurer discussion and comment.
All right, we just have four items tonight. First item, 6A. So I just want to give a recap of where Suburban Health Consortium is currently. So what we're looking at is month 11 out of 12, so we're in August. And there's actually a deficit of approximately $274,000 at this point. Um, revenues are $90,415,000, while expenditures are $90,689,000. So the beginning balance was 4.6 million. Um, we're at 4.4, so that $275,000 decrease that we have. We, uh, click on that first attachment that we have there.
That one?
Yep. So this is from Todd Puster, who's the retired treasurer from Orange Schools. He is still the fiscal consultant for Suburban Health Consortium, even as he's retired. But he notes two important factors that I wanted to bring up for everybody. The second highlight, uh, where he talks about, uh, yeah, where he says about the most optimistic outcome at fiscal year end is for the plan to be at break-even status. So that means no money gained. It's not essentially great, and we're just treading water with the Suburban Health Consortium. And his second comment at the very top says, "I would note that SHC's ending cash balance is 4.4 million and cash reserves are down by 274,000 through the first 11 months of the planned year. While the cash burn is not nearly what it has been the past few years, the numbers reinforce the need for the premium increase that member districts approved last month, as well as the decision to make a move on the prescription plan." We're going to talk more about that one next. But if we scroll down, we can see the financial statements from Todd. And we can see our 4.6 that we began October on the top left. If we minimize out, perfect. You can see the $90,415,000 right down there for revenue. If we go to the bottom half of the sheet, you can see expenditures at $90,689,000, our 4.4 for the month of August, our deficit of $274,000. And that blue line that we see there of 11.6 is ORC 9.833, and that's the amount the actuaries said we should have as our ending cash balance, not 4.4. So Suburban Health Consortium has a ways to go if we're to get higher than what the actuaries deem is the minimum balance that consortium should have. And keep in mind that it's a pretty sizable premium rate increase, double digits, that, you know, we just incurred, so even with that, we're not really making a dent in the cash balance. And I keep bringing that up to the consortium, but it's a, it's a difficult, uh, it's a difficult situation with approximately 17 school districts and different views on where we're at. Some schools view it as, we don't have to hit the 11.6 per se, even though that's a law. While other schools say we should be increasing our premiums higher to, uh, have more of a cash balance and start creeping up on that. So different opinions for different school districts, but that's the facts of where we're at as of August. So we keep watching that. If we're to click on that second attachment, the administrative content, so this is the email that I had sent to all staff. And it says, "I'm writing to inform you of an important update regarding our pharmacy benefits. On Friday, August 22nd, Suburban Health Consortium unanimously voted to change from Express Scripps to Smith RX as the new pharmacy benefit manager, effective January 1st, 2026. Benefits are not in any way being reduced as a result of this change." Greg Marcus, who's the president of Suburban Health Consortium and the treasurer at Rocky River Schools. So this email really outlines, um, a lot of talking points from Suburban Health Consortium. And as of today, I've only had one staff member reach out to me, uh, inquiring about this switch, so that's good. Uh, we're going to inform our staff more as we go, but I wanted to send this email out after that vote, just to give everybody a heads-up notification on the change that's coming out that we have. We're hopeful that that change in prescription drug could be a savings of approximately $1 million, give or take. But while that's a lot of money, $1 million doesn't really creep into what we need from the consortium. So it's good, but it's not, you know, significant to what we really need, so it's a pickle. So we keep watching it. Any questions or?
Just a, just a comment on the, on the effort by the legislation, legislature to lower the amount of money we have in the bank. Obviously, um, the health consortium doesn't have to follow that. And, uh, and not only that, but there's a law that says they have to have more than what we've been told we're limited to, so I just thought that was interesting.
Yep, and the CBCC is also in Suburban Health Consortium, so our partner district that we have. Yeah, Mr. Souchak, you're on board, or?
Right, CBCC is part of this.
Yep, yep, so, yep, but you're, you're exactly right, so. Um, item 6B, so this is the adoption of our cybersecurity program. So, uh, this is new, so, um, what it says down here is, Ohio Revised Code 9.64 enacted through House Bill 96 requires political subdivisions to set and adopt standards safeguarding against cybersecurity threats and ransomware attacks. Effective September 30th, 2025, upon discovering a cybersecurity incident or ransomware incident, political subdivisions must notify Ohio Homeland Security within seven days, and the outer state in 30 days. Additionally, counties and cities must adopt a cybersecurity program policy by January 1st, 2026, and all other entities by July 1st, 2026. So we are currently working on the cybersecurity program as we speak. Uh, there is going to be a presentation by Mr. Hartman at an upcoming future board meeting, but I just wanted to lay this out, um, in advance that that's coming on the horizon, and there's a date associated with it. And our cybersecurity program, my understanding, is, would require Board of Education approval to establish that, so. C, uh, this just, again, highlights the new forecast that we have in place coming up. Uh, and our first choice is to, at our October 1st board meeting, which would be a review and approval of the new forecast, which is a four-year forecast, my understanding. So they chopped off the fifth year.
They changed it again, I thought it was three.
Well, I was initially thinking that too, but I think they've hammered it out, and it's a four-year forecast, so.
Can't fall asleep at the switch around here.
No, 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 yeah, so.
Change the date, change the length.
Yeah, yep, and, you know, sometimes, you know, if it's not broke, don't fix it, sort of thing, but, but. But, uh, we'll be ready, we'll be prepared to review it. So again, our first choice is, you know, everything all in that one meeting. However, you know, if we want to take time, review it, and then approve it later before that 15th deadline, we can call a special meeting after the fact, but we can tackle that one day at a time as we get closer. And the last item is going to be, uh, just a FYI for us to schedule our records commission meeting sometime in this calendar year, uh, you know, looking at where we're at. Summer went by like that, we're already in the school year. The end of the year is going to come before we know it, so I figured I'd just get this on our radar to schedule it sometime in the future. So it doesn't have to be anytime immediately soon, but just that we know it's coming up.
It's an annual requirement.
And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Any, uh, questions or comments for the treasurer? Now, we'll move on to the superintendent's business and all of those items, starting with the seventh.
All right, thank you. On the consent agenda, I have items 7A, uh, item 8A, items 9A and B, items 10A and B, item 11A, and items 12A through D.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion for the superintendent's consent agenda items, please.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Decker on second, I think, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't looking, and my ears did not pick it up correctly. My apologies. Um, Ms. Prowse stands second by Mr. Dobbins. Discussion.
Okay. All right, so under 7A, this is the District's Reading Improvement Plan. Ohio Revised Code 3301.0075G states that if you do not hit a certain threshold on a third grade state assessment in reading, then you have to be on a reading improvement plan as a school district. There's actually two thresholds, there's an 80% threshold, there's a 60% threshold. The 60% is much more restrictive and usually gets state support team involved. So we, we feel like, uh, this might have been an anomaly year, because typically we're above 80%, but every so often, uh, you do get an outlier. Regardless, uh, we're going to be looking, uh, we have, we have goals set that are currently aligned with our literacy plan, as well as, uh, looking, uh, more deeply maybe at some data about tier-one instruction, just in case it needs some refinement, so, uh, that document is attached. Next, 8A, we have, uh, the resignation of bus driver, Mr. Shapalo, for, uh, personal reasons. Uh, certainly hope, um, you know, all is well with him and anyone in the future. If he has interest in coming back and driving, or a potential other position in the district, we certainly welcome him back, he's not leaving under bad terms whatsoever. Uh, nine, uh, we have employment of classified positions. We have another student monitor, we have, uh, Mary Cockrell as a student monitor at Step 1. I believe she has, uh, some grandchildren in the elementary school, so, again, always helps to have people who enjoy children coming over and helping us with the lunchroom and with, uh, recess duty and things like that. So that's ours is assigned a minimum of two hours per day, uh, per the contract at Step 1. Next, we have the employment of, uh, custodian, Jeffrey Mudra. I believe Mr. Mudra currently works with the Independence Police Department, is that correct? In the police department, or with the government? Yeah, with the jailing system there. So he has experience with, uh, with maintenance work and upkeep. So, uh, this is replacing, um, one of the positions we had vacated back in the spring. And in order to, again, when we get into these custodial and tradesman positions, you have to go, um, a little higher on your steps, because it's hard to attract, uh, people at competitive salaries who have specialized skill sets. So that's why you see Step 14 there. It's a one-year limited contract, um, as all are when they start, so. Next, uh, we have, under employment, our educator mentors. We have two categories of mentorship. One is for the resident educator program, which is required by state law. And so we have Melissa Meadwell, Lauren Glenn, and Bailey Hegidus, who require mentors. So Kristin Dilman, Logan Zostabny, and Mark Williams will be their mentors for this year. And then we have those that are new to the district, uh, those that come from outside that are already past the resident educator program, but we want to ensure that they have a smooth transition uh, into, you know, Cogga Heights life and family here, so. Uh, Sean Gero will be mentored by Mr. Bertoloni. Sean is our new art teacher at elementary school. And then Anna Marie Lankar, she is our, uh, sixth-grade teacher, new sixth-grade teacher that replaced, um, Mrs. Wilson in mathematics. Uh, Nate Burke is going to be her mentor. Uh, letter, letter B, I want to explain this a little bit, chat positions. Uh, it's actually, at the time of the agenda review, there's only one position. Uh, it turns out that back in the spring, when, um, Mrs. Deal was out for her medical leave, I was doing my best to substitute in and get the supplementals, and I completely left off all of our coaches. All right, so, all of these people have already started coaching. There are, most of them are familiar faces. Uh, we do need to get it approved tonight, because per contract, they get paid on Friday. And this was just simply an oversight when I copied and pasted the supplementals in the spring. I highlighted just the, uh, typical school-based, education-based supplementals, and did not highlight the, uh, the athletic ones. So this is the bulk, if you're wondering, why are we just now approving these? It's, I'm not as good as Mrs. Deal, uh, when it comes to these things, and, you know, I apologize to the treasurer's office certainly, because I know the kind of, uh, and logjam it, it creates when you have a small administrative team, you know, these things, we work really hard to get things accurate, so that's, that's my apologies for that, so. So that's, that's what this is, so this is the full sheet. Okay? You have any questions about that? Mrs. Edder, you good?
Yeah, I was just reading, I was trying to read, I couldn't, I can't read anything here.
Yeah, years of experience, the column, what step, the percentage of the step, based on the contract, here's the step, and then here's how much, and those are all per the negotiated agreement. So, uh, apologize for that, that misstep that should have happened back on May 28th with all the others.
I'm, I, again, I can't see it, but the amounts of money are like thousands of dollars, like $49,000?
No, that's, that's, so when we do a supplemental, it's based on whatever step two, BA step two of the contract is, and this year, the 25, 26 BA step two is $49,241. And so, for example, that first one you see up there, that faculty manager?
Yeah.
They get .13 or 13% of $49,241. That is their supplemental that you see then in the column that says contract amount.
Oh, that's the actual amount.
Yeah, so it's always based on one of the steps of the negotiated agreement, and then it's a percentage of that.
Yeah, I was.
And then there are tiers to it, so if you have so many years of experience, like a first year would be less of a percentage than somebody in their fifth year. Somebody in their 11th year is a higher percentage than somebody in their sixth year, for example. And at some point, you top out. You, you don't increase forever.
So why is it $0 for the coaches, assistant coaches for basketball? Like head coach basketball assistant?
Because we have not, uh, we have not yet put in the percentages based on their experience. That just hasn't been filled in yet.
Oh, they, they will be paid then?
They will be. Yeah, it'll be based on whatever the contract is. This is just approving the individuals, and then we will go back and fill in those remaining cells.
Gotcha.
So it's a little bit incomplete there.
Okay.
We've got a little bit of time with basketball coming, you know, a couple of months.
I mean, I wouldn't assume that they're working for free, so.
Well, they're not working at all right now, because it's basketball, so they're, they're not, yeah. But it just ensures that they have a, have a, um, and the reason why we typically try to do basketball in the spring is they do open gyms and things in the summertime, and while they aren't paid for them, it's nice that they know that they have the commitment from the school district that they will be our coaches, and so it, it just is a nice, uh, nice little bit of, like, job security, ownership, and engagement in the process, so.
Okay.
All right, next is 11A, this is our substitute teacher list for, uh, the month of September. You'll see three additions here. That comes from the ESC, and then, uh, 12. This is, uh, letter A, this is the approval of the protocol agreement, or MOU, with HOIT Institute of Food Allergy. So in working with Chief Sui from the Allison Rose Foundation, he had, uh, wanted to extend the opportunity for us to increase our stock of EpiPens, as well as have a diversified set of dosages. So we know a student under, I think it's under 60 pounds, receives a different dose than a student over 60 pounds, and so to be able to have that type of flexibility, is, is something that, you know, I think, uh, we're very fortunate to have that connection. However, we have to, uh, do this MOU with the provider of that in order to get it for free. It's no cost to the district. So the deadline to sign that is tonight, so I will do the docu-sign as soon as this meeting's over, just to make sure that we are, uh, secure with that. Uh, next, this is, uh, an hourly, um, rate for psychology, school psychology services through PSI affiliates. As I'd mentioned in my Friday update, we have a dedicated school psychologist. However, the number of, uh, special ed students in the district, and especially outside of the district, so if a student is a resident in the district and attends elsewhere, we are responsible for their evaluations, their testing, is that correct? All right, you're shaking your head no.
It's for, uh, New Story School in Independence, which is like.
That's it, it's New Story School, yes. Yeah. That's what it was.
Required by law to, uh, do their evaluation, so that's like, again, one of those unfunded mandates that, you know, all folks from this district get, uh, put on that. Usually it's last second month, so it's very challenging, if you already have, um, one scheduled internally to do testing and do meetings, so.
So how many students do we have in the district that were, that could require testing over a period of three years?
114.
114, and then you throw 10 more students at this private school that happens to reside in our school district, we're responsible for their special ed services, even though those students don't attend here. That's, that's a large caseload for one individual.
So there is this specialized school in Brooklyn Heights, you're saying?
Right.
Yeah, I didn't know that. What's the other?
New Story School Independence. Not confusing at all.
No, but it's in Brooklyn Heights.
Yep, so therefore, yeah, they, they have the, they have the option each year to receive some of our federal grant funding, um, as well as the special education services.
Why don't, uh, where the student actually lives, why don't, um, their home district pay for their own?
It's the way laws, and same thing, if we had a student who was attending St. Michael's, and they're an IEP, they would do the ETR for that student. We're not allowed to, like, I tried to say, hey, we'll do that, but.
Yeah, it's the way the, the way the law's written. And we, we're fortunate to only have one, uh, private school. There are some who have half a dozen to a dozen within their boundaries.
Right.
And they're responsible for all of that. Again, it's, it's one of those, oh, I'm not going to go down that rabbit hole with, with how.
We're responsible, we don't, do we get extra money to do it from the state?
We do not.
Oh, of course not.
All right, next, letter C, this is to approve REACH Counseling Services for Behavioral Health, related to, uh, mental health counseling services for, uh, students, staff, and parents. It costs not to exceed $2,000. Uh, this is one of the services, then we're required to notify families that we offer. We're required to notify of any health-related services, uh, per the parent bill of rights. And so PSI is one, and then REACH Counseling is another. And then, letter D, this is a inter-district agreement modification. Uh, when Mrs. Russell came over to sixth grade, uh, she had been providing tier-three intervention to our students next door, and that left a gap, and there was nobody else who could fulfill that particular requirement, and you talk about a diamond in the rough here, right? I mean, uh, this person, what's her, she's a. Yep. Yeah, she trained staff to implement science of reading, and, and her retired job is going to work two hours per day, uh, to work with our students who require this specially-designed intervention, so, per the requirements of the science of reading. And so this is the modification of that.
So who is our person, what's her name, or?
Yeah, let me, let me get to that.
Is it in this first thing? Yeah.
No, it's going to be on the personnel cost sheet right here. Her name is, which highlight here?
Susan Ellert.
Oh.
Susan Ellert.
Okay.
She's right here, tutor. At that's, this particular rate, uh, will cost us. 13,000.
And that's going to be specifically for the science of reading?
Yep, re, reading intervention for, uh, some tier-two, but mostly tier-three specialized intervention that's required for students who, uh, could have, they could be diagnosed with dyslexia. They may be two, uh, one to two grade levels behind in reading, and this allows us to.
You know, when there's a late need, and, uh, and Mr. Melvin, and Miss Collins, and myself, and you're like, this can't be real, because you don't know where you're going to get to that point, and so you're going to have to go further than that, so it's a newer portion of the piece I'm.
Wow, that's amazing.
I believe that is the last item.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Any further discussion or questions for superintendent's business? There are none, treasurer, please call the roll.
Ms. Prowse?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye.
Mrs. Etter?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Sjochik?
Aye. Motion passes five-zero, moving on to section fourteen, superintendent's discussion and comments.
All right, a few things here. I think we have notified you that Senator Sereno has accepted our invitation to come visit our school district, that is on Monday, September fifteenth, from ten o'clock to twelve o'clock. Has a hard stop time at noon, so we'll make sure that we get him out of here ahead of time, but it's an exciting opportunity for us to showcase why we feel that we are a model school district and why we are actually a desire, we produce the desirable results in education for our children that I, we believe our community not only expects, but I think they want. And, you know, that, that brings me to, you know, the second thing I was going to talk about, and that was, again, I talked about this in the Friday update, Lake County Auditor Chris Galloway, who is part of the governor's workforce, or work group to talk about property tax relief. He said, I'm going to read it, said he would soon be forwarding to the group his proposal to urge the creation of another work group to tackle the sheer number of taxing jurisdictions in Ohio, noting that Ohio went from more than two thousand school districts a century ago to the current six hundred-plus model and can do much more. He states, "I have the smallest geographic county in the state of Ohio, I don't need eight library districts. We do not need six hundred and ten school districts in the state of Ohio, we need ninety-four. There is going to have to be a real conversation about consolidation and simplification of government in Ohio." So, that's not coming from your state legislature, that's coming from your governor's work group on property tax relief. Not saying that he has not had conversations with people, you know, in your house or your senate, but, again, when we want to have, and we're grateful that the senator is coming, but we believe our school, our, our community wants a small school district. I think they want the type of intimate relationships that we form with our children that pushes them to their potential, that, you know, appreciates the community, that works very hard to get the results that keep this community proud of where they live and who they are, just like our village services that are provided to our residents, our top-notch. So they're not just talking about consolidating schools, they're talking about consolidating governments, which would mean your villages as well. So, you, you can see maybe some of the rationale behind it, it's not necessarily out of left field, but how do you know that your community wants it? Maybe your community is willing to pay what they pay in taxes to have that, and if your communities don't want that, then by all means, give them what they want too, and if that means consolidating, consolidate, but it gets to be very, you know, it's, it's, who knows where that's going to go? It gets to be a little scary because do you take fate into your own hand and just say, hey, maybe we should consider this ourselves, or do you let, let this play out and then see what happens? So, we're proud of what we have and we certainly want to showcase that, and if any board member wants to attend that day, I just can't have three of you at one time, but certainly if you want to come in phases, if somebody wants to come from, you know, this time to this time, or, you know, a couple of you at a time, and we don't form a quorum, then we'll be great.
You're speaking of the Senator Sereno's visit?
Senator Sereno's visit, yep. We're putting together a schedule, we're going to have a little bit of time with us, but we really wanted to take him around and show him our buildings, show him our students, and allow, you know, time to interact as well. We're just, again, it's not to politic for anything other than we feel what we have is above excellent, and we would very much like to just be left alone, if that's possible. And then, I'll jump off the legislative bandwagon here, but I don't know if you saw this communication came out, OSBA, I think it was yesterday or the day before. Recently introduced bill, so you've got House Bill four-twenty, sponsored by Gary Click and Bernie Willis. This bill would disallow and eliminate continuing levies by twenty-thirty. This is the first of three bills in the taxpayers' freedom trilogy, named Act One, discontinuing the continuum. All but one mill of what we have is continuing.
Yeah.
Essentially would move to eliminate our local funding source, which is seventy percent of our funding. Okay, that's, that's, that's number one. House Bill four-twenty-one, sponsored by Representatives Click and Dave Thomas, your buddy, I think you like to send messages to him every so often, that. This is the second bill in the taxpayers' freedom trilogy, named Act Two, arresting inside millage. This bill would allow electors to reduce unvoted property taxes by a referendum vote. That's two million dollars a year we receive.
That's what's the unvoted, that's the?
That's inside millage, yep. Approximately two million dollars, one point nine, I think, is, is what it is. All right, and then you've got House Bill four-twenty-two, sponsored by Representatives Click and Jonathan Newman. This is the third bill in the taxpayer freedom trilogy, named Act Three, The Triumph of the Taxpayer. This bill would increase the approval threshold required for passage of certain property taxes dependent on the number of mills requested. So you'll have to clear barriers, remember, I think it would have been proposed sixty percent at one point to be able to pass a levy. All right, so, the property tax conversation isn't going away, and I think we foreshadowed that back when the governor had talked about, he had line item vetoed several items, and then the House was going to come back to override, and they over, only overrode one of those items, but the others are going to come back around, and they're going to come back around in this particular, particularly in this particular way. So we'll see how it goes, but I just want you to just understand, we are not by any stretch of the imagination out of the woods, and in some regards, the fight is just beginning for our school district and every community school district in Ohio. So, that's the legislative front. As far as like the school is going, you know, we're, we're off and running, it's great to have everybody back in the buildings, pre-K through twelve. I think tomorrow night is our last kind of open house type of thing, we've got the parent information night, is that right? Tomorrow, it's elementary school. We also have a meeting, we haven't done this in the past, but we want to make sure that we're offering up an informational night for our students in the gifted program. If your child has a WEP or a WAP, and we love acronyms in, in education, or, you know, you, you just want to know what gifted education or accelerated services are, Amy Harker, who's our gifted coordinator, is going to lead a presentation tomorrow night as well. So, we got those two things going on tomorrow night, and one of these days, we're going to have a home football game, I think that's, that's coming a week from Friday, is that correct? Because we've been on the road, we've been on the road two of the first three weeks where we had a bye, so, looking forward to that. I know our soccer teams, golf teams, cross-country volleyball, everybody is in full force, so it's great to have everybody back. All right, I think I'm done.
Thank you. Any questions for the superintendent?
Yeah, I do have one comment from Mr. Young. Given the, the breadth of what you or we are anticipating might be on the horizon with the legislator or legislature, do you have a sense as to whether there would be value by inviting some of the local elected officials to the chart, the Mr. Senator Sereno meeting at the school? And I just put it out there, I, you and I haven't talked previously, it's been very busy for both of us, but I, I just put it out there as to whether that warrants any.
Yeah, we had, we had discussed whether that would be beneficial, and if it was beneficial for them to meet Senator Sereno when would it be? I want to be careful not to have anybody hijack what we're trying to do here, and that is showcase our school district, however, the intent is to have Senator Sereno finished by eleven forty-five, eleven forty, eleven forty-five. At that time, should there be elected officials here who wanted to just say hello, thanks for coming to our village, that's certainly a possibility on the way, you know, out of the village. Because I know he's got a hard stop at twelve, so, you know, it would prevent. What I don't want is, what I don't want is for, and what can't happen is for the senator to, to feel like he was caught off guard by something.
Of course.
And we're, we've already sent over what our anticipated agenda is going to be, and certainly we could add to the end of that, but it's not going to be in, you know, an open forum of question and answering or anything like that unless he has questions he wants us to answer. We just really want to show him around our school district and let him see our historical buildings and our first-class education, and more than anything, just see our students. So, but if that's feedback that could be valuable, you know, it doesn't, it never hurts to throw that out there, I know I was considering at least emailing the mayors, letting them know that he was coming into town, and that, you know, this is the timeframe, and certainly if they would like to stop over and say hello, eleven forty-five would be a great time to do that before he leaves.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's a good question.
Anything else? All right, moving on to section fifteen, board policy and bylaws review. Fifteen A, we have, whoops, sorry, we have a motion to approve the policy on its second reading for personal communication devices. There, is there, would someone like to make a motion to approve that item, or at least discuss it?
We're still in a discussion phase, aren't we?
Do you have to motion before we can discuss it? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah.
Second.
Okay, so, so Ms. Prowse made, so now we can discuss that item, that doesn't mean, you know, let's just discuss, we can always choose to vote on it, not vote on it, suspend it for now, we, we, we have lots of options.
Yeah, we just know it has to be in place by January one, and it's September third, so we do have some time. I think, I think the policy, as we have it all checked, I think it checks all the boxes, but if we want to have more discussion about implementation of the policy and what that could look like before we have a final, a final vote on that, that's certainly warranted because we want to make sure, because even if you read this note and the drafting note, it is important to include any use the school board wants to approve. If the district differentiates personal communication devices, devices use, exceptions by grade level, adjust, duplicate, section, so on and so forth, like, so for example, our current, the guidelines we had in place last year, no devices in elementary school, right? In the middle school, they could have them in their lockers, and then last year, high school could just have it, right? So we have differentiated by grade level in the past. And so, that's kind of what that's referring to, so, you know, there's even room to say, you know, exceptions and whatnot, it's just the more exceptions you have, the harder it's going to be to manage. Likewise, if we want to discuss or get more information about how it's going to be implemented, or even get more feedback as to what the enforcement of the policy is, because where you get, I think I mentioned this last time, there are some bills, for example, the Parents' Bill of Rights, there are people in the State House who believe that if an educator violates the Parents' Bill of Rights, for example, if a student is struggling with gender identity, and that's not, and you know about it as an educator, you don't close that to the parent, that's punishable by your license. And that is out, like, like, there's the, there's just that concern, you know, that what is and isn't going to be enforced, how are they going to enforce it, and what's that going to look like? Now, we don't know, I mean, we could enforce any policy to the T at any time, and I, I, I don't know. So, if we want to get more information before we put our stamp on it, then you get more information, and I'll, I'll get that for you. That's, we've got, we've got time.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at two things, more information, but also what may change in the next two or three months, since things do change a lot.
Yeah, it would take an act of law to change anything specifically, it's the implementation of the law that's, that is right now being volleyed back and forth, and I don't think we've even gotten any update from NS Britain on this, we haven't gotten, the only updates we've gotten is from BASA and the Ohio Department of Education workforce. So the State Superintendent's Association and then ODEW, those are the only ones that have put out some information, and ODEW's taking one stance, and we're not exactly sure whether that's going to hold up. Because again, they define, ODEW defines instruction time as all time, including lunch, recess, and that's our governing body right now, is educators with licenses. But we don't know if that would hold up if it got challenged, that's just what we don't know yet. So, that needs to get interpreted, and I can guarantee you, like, it's one of the things we'll talk about with the Alliance of High Quality Education and BASA, OSBA, some of our advocacy groups, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, so, I mean, maybe based on that, we, we wait a couple of months, you guys can also see how it goes, like, part of me is like, is it realistic to, they're not allowed to have it, and then you let it out at lunch, and then they all have to put it away, like, sometimes, it's harder to manage, that's just the reality, and you guys have to follow the law, so I think, maybe we just kind of see how it is going over the next couple of months before we.
Part of it is too, it's sitting right in their backpack, they're carrying it around all day.
Yeah, and the backpack is part of the emergency response plan, because that's something you have to accommodate for and account for, is that if there is an actual emergency, what is the access of students to the device, should there be an active shooter? And the most, the strictest rendition of the policy is they can't even bring it on school grounds and in the building. If they bring it in the building, where does it stay? If it stays in a locker, okay, it's locked, it's in a locker, it's locked up, all right, during a school shooting, are you going to go through, I shouldn't say school shooting, that's, that's inappropriate, an emergency event where there is the fear of, of something like that, are you going to have time to work your locker? No, nobody's going to work their locker. But if you have your device, you got your backpack there, it's easily accessible, and it actually becomes something that is a positive emergency response mechanism, procedure, so, that's why it's on their, that's why it's under the device, we don't want them to carry it on their, their bodies, because then you get into, are you using it inappropriately? Well, now I have to, we have to search a person's body, not a body, but, you know, and then pockets and this, and then that gets to be very awkward, if you've ever had to do a reasonable suspicion search, it's just, it's not, so that's why it's in the backpacks specifically, as opposed to on the self, or.
I believe, obviously one thing is give it some time to wait, we get some like actual real-time data on what the implementation looks like, from Mr. Trey, Mrs. Scott, and school setting, and teachers, what it looks like for them, so we can get some feedback, obviously on that too, getting more information. All the districts are combining this with different, some are allowing during lunchtime, others are not, but you're going to pass those.
There's even some districts are saying, we're just not going to, we're going to do our own thing, we don't care, and I'm like, that's really, I don't know how you do that.
The few that I've talked to, my coworkers, Rocky River and Brexville and North Royalton, they have the, there's a shoe thing, you walk on the class, put it in there, and then during, when you're walking to class and lunches, you have your phone, and then once you get to class, you put it in a little pouch.
Yep.
And that's pretty much how they take attendance for class, they look at the pouch, and then they take attendance that way.
Yep.
So, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
I mean, obviously, all of this is based on Governor Devine's mandate, and, and also there's, these are the suggestions that the school, they're suggesting for the schools to implement. Can I just have, like, I mean, so, kids and cellphones have been around for a while, so here at Kaihug Heights, like, give me an assessment of how serious a problem this could be?
Do we get into problems with children, with students abusing their cellphones while at school? Okay.
It is a major problem.
It wasn't a middle school was a major problem, of the degree of bullying and self-esteem issues that we had was, was very serious.
Like, you know, when I was going to school, like, there was nowhere incidents, you know, for, tax time, social media posts during school day, bullying, you know, those things have happened, have highlights, have been addressed, you know, kids had contests, it was always covered, there was, you know, something there, if you violated that, you never know.
So the policy we had in place, when there were infractions, those were addressed?
They were.
Okay. So, in your estimation?
Okay. So in your estimation, like, where's the comfortable ground, I guess, I'm trying to figure out? Like, is there more to be done? Is there less to be done? Is there, you know...
The number of approaches is always, you know, you felt strongly, that's why the policy in high school, high school was different than middle school and elementary, was we had a lot of these, you teach kids responsibly to use technology, you know, so that was always approaches like, is this how you use it properly, is this how you don't? And again, I think especially with students, high school age students as well, and other schools, and kids here, it's, why are we giving this, because we're pretty good here. You know, we agree, like, it's, when you ask kids to not do something, they accept the limit, and when you address it, you don't have repeat offenders on that, and that's part of the learning, how to do it the right way. Kids are very sneaky, they're going to restaurants, and they're finding Paul Waver's, and a teacher, and a camera, and then they shoot effects and do things like that. So again, it's challenging, Mr. Young said, we were educators when cell phones first came, like, we both probably took way deeper shit kids.
Pagers, yep.
Pagers at one point, you know, in our careers, you know, so those things always evolve with what they are. But it's really challenging now, because again, I know, I see my wife send a text to my daughter during school day, I'm like, she's not reading that right now. But it's not happening, because then it's changed a lot of like, just the flow of communication between families and kids. I mean, there's, I can look back to, and look around and give some flexibility for that.
I've never thought about the angst that it puts on the parents that are trying to get a hold of their children.
I think that is part of the debate, and we can't solve that today, because we have to figure out what the policy is that's going to follow, a law that we were handed that none of us probably really want to deal with, but we just have to kind of find the common ground.
Yeah, it's challenging, because we grew up where there were no cell phones. And if we, your parents need to get a hold of us, they called the office, and the office went over the PA system, and they called your name, and everybody went, ooh, like you're in trouble.
You got to go down there.
But also, things changed when events started happening in schools that we never had to worry about when I was growing up.
Right.
So this is the, Ohio Department of Education workforce has an entire resource page on cell phones. And so you can dive deep into what it is they are thinking, if you want to see what they are putting out as, call it recommendations for policy development and what this should be looking like in schools. So there's a, there's a lot of links there for Ohio's cell phones in the school toolkit.
I mean, one of the positives, I tell you, like, even in lunchroom, like, when kids are engaged with one another, person to person, it's pretty easy. The same thing when we first entered middle school, when you put more restrictions on it, to see students engaged with one another, like, that part is good, you know, so to sit on your cell phone, playing games or watching videos, you know. So that's the part, you don't have the same control over yourself, usually, where they have access to. In the school, there's nothing blocked, you know, and fully contact, things that should be accessed. So that's, that's a big challenge, I think, that schools want to govern in large schools.
Yeah. So, I mean, we've, we've jumped into some of these, but certainly we can take some more time from our end to look through these too if we... Like, I don't think there's anything, there's no harm in pushing the policy to another month, but I don't think there's anything in the policy that goes against anything that we were trying to accomplish in seeing, is there flexibility? Everything we've checked provides the flexibility, you know, for the most part. There's just more whys that we have to maybe get answered, so. Yeah. So there's a lot of, like I said, a lot of resources here. All these are links that you can click to see. So, yeah, completely up to you. We have like two dozen policies we're going to be looking at over the next couple of months anyways. So this can be folded into some of those without any problem. We're way ahead of the January one deadline.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we table this item for the time being and bring it back with the other policies a little later.
Yeah, we'll report back. I might have Mr. Ditré maybe present, wait, you have October first as your four-year forecast? It doesn't mean we can't provide you an update on some of the data we're seeing.
Right, that too.
We can still do a small presentation on that.
Right, and how the changes that you are making are going.
Yeah, yeah, data's good.
Be important to know, and may affect what we put in policy. And again, you know, we just established the policy, you're, the staff are the ones who have to fill in the details and enforce it.
Yeah, and it's new. Of course, there's going to be things that we have to figure out. It's not going to be...
Right.
So do we have to vote on table yet, or what are we...
I don't know the rule on that.
I think if I'm, go ahead, Ms. Muccio.
You could, I don't think you have to.
So we can just table it. Table it for a future meeting with other policy discussion.
That's fair.
And give the administration a chance to discuss how well things are being implemented that are being done. And perhaps come back with some modifications at that time. Okay.
So the motion dies then?
And the motion just dies.
There's no action taken, so the motion dies. It was seconded, and that was presented to...
And but no vote is being taken, so I think that's the way that works. Okay, so that moves us on to number sixteen, sixteen A, approve attendance at the OSBA Capitol Conference. And sixteen B, approve the treasurer's attendance at the CPIM conference. I'll entertain a motion for those two items, please.
So moved?
Uh, that was Ms. Decker?
Mm-hmm.
I got it right that time. Any, any second?
Second.
Mr. Dobbins is seconded. Any discussion on those two items?
The only thing I would maybe have us look into, because that's the flat, that's, if all of us go, it doesn't go above thirty, $3,160, but if there's only going to be four people going, is it cheaper than? Or are you just approving that this is the max amount we would spend should all people go? Because I think Mr. Dobbins had mentioned that maybe he cannot go, Mrs. Decker had mentioned she could not go, Mrs. Edder can't, did you mention you can't go, or are you going?
I probably will not go.
You said you probably were not going.
There is actually one thing I would love to go see there, but I probably won't go for the whole conference, no.
Yeah. And Mrs. Prowse, you said you weren't going, Mr. Sichak, you might, you, I think you were going. And then potentially the three of us. So I didn't know if four people...
So right now, it's you, me, George, and...
Yeah, I think that's the list at the moment.
That's the only thing I'd consider is that if it's...
Need to reword the resolution.
Three ninety-five a person, you're at twelve hundred, you're just under twelve hundred dollars for registration.
Yeah, since I know it's four people, and the hotel portal opens the sixteenth of September, so with portal opening then, knowing four people are planning to go now, we can just register the four, and then I'll just move to get the four hotels with portal opening.
But are we going to vote on this, or are we going to amend it?
We can, we can...
Well, the max, the max would be thirty-one sixty? So you can always go less, you just can't go over, right?
So up to thirty-one sixty, so that's fine?
Right, not, yeah, it's not to exceed, I mean, there's no...
Yeah, not to exceed thirty-one sixty.
We could pay more, because there's a flat fee, and you can essentially take as many people as you want, you know, above beyond. So as it stands right now, I'm only going to register four people with the window open that additional people could go. But just know that that portal opens the sixteenth, so if I don't know beforehand, those hotel rooms go like that, so...
And so if something changes.
Yeah, if anything changes, you know, we have this not to exceed, and, you know, we can, I can, you know, just register people.
Okay. All right, so those who have said no, or I'm not sure, let Mr. Muccio know before, what date, what's the date? I remember seeing it, but I don't remember the date.
September fifteenth.
No, no, never.
No, that's, uh...
No, of the portal.
Yeah, the portal, September sixteenth is the portal, so that's...
It's the hotels.
Yeah, preferably by that date. If you don't make it by that date, you could still go, but...
You're on your own.
But you're, well, you're not on your own, it's just that you might be, you might be walking a little further or taking a bus, yes. Oh, we, we did that a number of years recently.
We've been lucky, Blaz.
Last year was the first time in a while that we've been at the actual site. And I'm gotten used to taking that bus, which was okay, but it's even nicer to be able to just walk and not have to go outside at all in case it's cold. So anyhow, so it's an up-to amount. And the other one was the attendance for the treasurer at that conference, so. Any other discussion on these two items? And treasurer, please call and roll.
Ms. Prowse?
Hi.
Uh, excuse me, Mrs. Decker?
Hi.
Sorry, Mr. Dobbins.
Hi.
Mrs. Edder?
Hi.
Ms. Prowse?
Hi.
Mr. Sichak?
Hi, motion passes five zero. Moving on to eighteen, board discussion comments. Anybody have anything?
I attended the Zoom meeting for the OSBA's Legislative Liaison Network. It was a monthly Zoom call, and it's held basically the last Monday of the month. Given that this past Monday was a holiday, it was the Monday before. So I didn't keep extensive notes, but what I do recall from that, from that meeting is that the staff at the OSBA was summarizing a good portion of the trilogy bills that Mr. Young had summarized earlier. So there is an overlap, and I appreciate that network offering up their, their take on the status of these bills that coincided with Mr. Young's. That's all I have.
Did you want to fill in on what the feelings were at the group, or...
Well, um, they, they, well, the, the general take, the staff was presenting legislation that's been submitted, I don't know, introduced is the right word, has been, that it's been introduced. And there was a summary of the legislation that the trilogy pieces that Mr. Young referred to in greater detail. They didn't go into extensive detail, but they just said, kind of essentially, stay tuned, we need to keep an eye on this, and we will get the word out to our members ASAP if and as things change. They also said that, that there could be some effect or some consequence on these bills based upon larger happenings at the federal level. And so they were just saying, kind of, again, stay tuned, we'll see, next month's call should be very interesting.
Okay, thank you.
I had an opportunity to be your cheerleader for the district the other day. I was at the Valley View Senior Club, and I highlighted to the members our latest achievements, the U.S. News and World Report, and our high school standing ranking among four percent in the nation. And I also told them about our improvement in the Ohio State Report Card from twenty-eighth to twenty-fourth in Ohio of the six hundred and some districts. Then I prompted a couple of comments from the members. They wanted to know if there's any possibility that there'd be any reversal in the tax increases that were approved by the villages, the voters recently. And there was also some discussion prompted by me mostly about where the monies are actually being used and how we, you know, were saved from not having to give the state $400,000 in that governor's veto on June thirtieth. Then I gave them the highlights of some of the projects that were going on, and, you know, they obviously were like, oh, there's a problem with the hillside, there's a problem with our fire alarm, there's a problem with our roof. And I was, you know, trying to tell them that it's just like when you are at your own home. You lived there ten, twenty years, there's going to be things that you have to do at home that will change your household budget. And just, these are things that occur here at the dis, at our school district that we have to address. So we, there was some discussion about that. Judy Harben was also there, was a retired teacher, she was happy that I brought this up. And then coincidentally, we were also asked to fill out a survey of things of meetings and speakers and trips that we want to take and things like that. And I believe that there was a suggestion to have the superintendent come and speak to the groups sometime. So don't be surprised, definitely, you're invited to the...
I would love it. That'd be great. Definitely love to do that.
I can work on Brooklyn Heights if you want me to.
No, I really, I think, I think that's the, that's the, you know, I'm trying to work on kind of a state of the school, so to speak, through the lens of our pillars of the best committee, right? And I've got two of the six tackled, so I've got some work to do. But then being able to take that out and engage the community with that information about just, just the realities of what it takes to get those results year in and year out, and what our commitment is to the communities each and every day we show up here. And I think that would be great to, to speak with all the groups. You know, I'm willing to do that. I don't know if village councils want me to show up. I'm willing to do the same thing. And I could do that as early as October.
Are we still planning a senior dinner?
We've got seniors serving seniors. We still have the holiday, kind of the holiday concert and the musical again. So we still have the three, there's three targeted senior events that we will do, so.
I mean, as I, I mean, this was just an impromptu, I just stood up and started saying a few things. I got, you know, I was, I was standing there, and I thought, you know, there are many people, you know, our villages have legacy families, and there may have been people in that audience, you know, yes, two days ago, that maybe were graduates themselves or had children here and that. But there may be a whole people that are very distant, that didn't have any connection to the school. And they're, you know, in their sixties, seventies, and eighties. And we're talking about a generation, you know, of children from four to eighteen. So, you know, it's a big difference in age, but I'd like to see, I don't know, a good connection and the communication out there. At least that they are there aware of what's happening here at the school. Because, you know, the school is part of the, of our, the district is part of the villages, and it's a big part of the villages, is who we are. And I don't know, I just, just hope that there's some good communication still out there, so that the older population...
You can take some seniors to your senior meeting, some CHS seniors.
No, I think that'd be great, absolutely. I think that's the, the in-person, the in-person interactions, old-fashioned way still works extremely effectively. It's still the, being able to look somebody in the eyes and tell a story and form a relationship and get some type of emotional response. It does something that sending out a flyer or holding even a Zoom meeting, even if you're trying to talk people through a camera, it's not, just not the same as...
It's almost as if you want to tell them that they're getting their money's worth.
Yep.
You know what I mean? Like, yes, they're paying the taxes, and unfortunately, that's the way it's set up here in our state of Ohio, that the burden of public education rests on the property owners. That's, that's the reality of it all. But at least give them some information that the money's, that the money's being well spent, and they're getting value for what they're paying. That's how, that's what I would hope would come out of this.
I'm in.
Yep. Anything else? I have a few things from the Career Center. Did make it to the last meeting, got back from my vacation just in time to get to their meeting. The $30,000 funding amount for each of the partner districts was, was approved this past meeting. And a comment was made that Independence is using this money to help pay for their IT instructor, which I thought was an interesting concept. I kind of like the way we've been doing it to upgrade facilities in various places, but I just thought I'd throw that out there. That's what Independence has chosen to do. We, of course, we, we had on there the consortium agreement with the suburban health, and that item passed. Comment was made about the number of career centers throughout the state, or more specifically, in northeast Ohio. There are eight here in Cogga County and seven in Summit County. That's fifteen, and there's only forty-some in the state? Something like that, I don't remember the total number now. So we have by far the highest percentage of career centers in the state. I think there are some counties that even share a career center. So I thought that, that was an interesting statistic. It just shows that this is where the jobs are too. I think that's, that's a big part of that. And then on opening day, there were 1,003 students. The goal by 2030 is to have 1,000 students. However, opening day numbers are different from commit... However, opening day numbers are different from commitment numbers. Because opening day, when you come in on opening day, you still have, and I don't know the exact time, a week or two, maybe a little longer, before you have, where you can add or drop. In other words, you could go back to your home district and say, this is not for me. Or you can say, this is not, I chose the wrong course, I wanna try this one. And then, they, they give them a few weeks to, to make that decision, because it is such a change from, from the home school. So last year, uh, the number after add dropped, dropped down to nine hundred and twenty-seven, so we don't see us moving forward at a thousand and three. It's prob, but if we get up to nine fifty, that would be a step, you know, a positive step. And the limiting factor in many cases is the fact there just isn't enough space. You can't take everybody who wants to be there. Many of the courses are completely filled. You can only have so many lifts with cars on them, where you can train people how to do brake jobs. Or, or so many places where you can build something. And every year, by the way, in the construction, they, they're starting, it's starting now, they build all the, they spend the whole semester building everything, and then toward the end of the year, they take it all apart, and the room is empty again. You know, and, and there's just so many, there's just only so much room for people. And that's part of the reason why it's hard to hit that number, but we, we firmly believe we're gonna make it there by twenty thirty, and probably before, it's the rate we're going, especially with the expansion, which is moving along, and I don't have any update on that yet. Other beyond, it's shooting for the end of, the end of this calendar year.
Any thoughts as to, you, you indicated before that there's a high preponderance of, of career tech centers in this northern Ohio region, or east nor, northeast Ohio region. Any idea if they're at capacity as well, if, if-
The other ones?
Yeah, if-
I couldn't answer that specifically.
Yeah, I didn't know if you- Yes, many of them are, but I couldn't specifically answer.
And here's a ni, if you, in case the administration ever wants more work, this is a very nice little booklet that the Career Center gives us. It has, um, a front page, of course, with all the board members, but on the inside, then it goes through the superintendent's office, treasurer's office, business office, cafeteria staff, operations, and then all of the instructors. So you get everybody's picture, you get all their names, that's really nice to have, really nice to have, so. And if anybody wants to review this, there are some local Coggi's residents in here, of course, other than just the board members. Have several staff members, as you know. Anyhow, that's really nice, guys, if you ever have a little time. I know it's not gonna be high on your list, but maybe, maybe, I think, um, the communication person-
Wouldn't you like, then that's, we can, we have a communication, uh, team that works on things like that.
And that's who puts this together, it's not the administrators.
Yeah.
That's pretty, that's a pretty cool document, I look forward to getting it every year. In fact, the whole board gets it now because I was the one who asked for it. I saw it several years ago, and I said, this is great, now I have some idea of who I'm talking to. And, and so I made sure I got a copy of it every year because they only distributed it, distributed it internally. But then I got them to start giving it to all board members too, so. So it's a nice document, um, and that's all I have. Any other items for discussion? Okay, hearing none, future agenda items. Okay, hearing none, informational items. Should be noted, the Board of Education members receives their, um, their agendas several days prior to the actual meeting, and have had opportunity to study and so forth. Upcoming regular meetings, um, September seventeenth at seven PM, October first at six PM, and October fifteenth at seven PM. At this point, I hereby move that the Board adjourn to executive session pursuant to ORC Section one twenty-one, twenty-two G one, to consider employment, employment dismissal, et cetera, compensation of a public employee official, and ORC one twenty-one, twenty-two G four, preparing for, conducting negotiations, abrogating sessions, and so forth. I make that motion, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, by Ms. Prouse, is there any discussion? Hearing none, treasurer, please call and roll.
Mr. Sichaki?
Aye.
Ms. Prouse?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye.
Mrs. Etter?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, we are adjourning into executive session at seven fifteen, no action will be taken following executive session.